In order for stamping, branch.
Oh, there it is.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, in due regard, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you go. Roll call.
Huh?
Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson. Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Eidman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Obrister.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
How are you doing? Move for approval of the agenda.
Move, Mayor. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is where we certify the election results. Make a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So takes us to the swearing in of the new members. You're right open with the sunset. So the new board members come forward, please. And the mayor. Yes, we're gonna get out of the way.
Right, ready and repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Mayor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of.
For the office of the Alderman Mayor.
Of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri.
Of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of the state of Missouri.
Affecting cities of the fourth class.
Affecting cities of the fourth class.
And the ordinances of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of.
In the office of the Alderman Mayor.
Of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri.
Of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri.
For which I was elected on the fourth day of April of 2023.
For which I was elected on the fourth day of April of 2023.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, so before we break up and everybody leaves, I've got the new mayor and I need the former mayor.
See him, Mike.
And Alderman Jokers. Now pass Alderman Jokers if you would please join us up there.
Oh, sure.
Well, get over here. This is your game, yeah, right? Oh, here. So, a faithful servant. And it's an honor, it's my honor, on behalf of the city, for Michael Buck Jokers, it is with great honor and appreciation that the city of St. Genevieve recognizes and applauds your outstanding commitment and lifetime of dedication, spending thirty-four years working to better the community in service to the residents of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri. Thirty-four years of public service.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He threw it at me.
So we know that Buck Jokers cannot leave a room without talking to everybody.
That's right.
And in the spirit of that, we have cake that we want to cut and have just a little bit of a break to thank those that have been on the Board of Aldermen for the amount of time they have. For those that are coming on, congratulations for getting voted in, and for Buck and the years of service that he has spent with the city. So if somebody wants, you want to start cutting the cake or eating the cake, then we'll get back into it.
Yeah. It's nice. Yeah. It's alright.
Well, I'm figuring she has one.
She's not getting that bad. She sleeps about twenty-three hours a day.
You get so much better than that, man. You get so much.
Yeah.
I get her into entering the series.
I get her into entering the series.
That's what I use to do.
Oh.
I'm good.
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 It's just different.
Oh, look at that.
Yeah.
I saw it.
Somebody was saying that I kept looking for it.
I kept checking.
I always said, I knew that.
I had just been saying it.
Yeah, I knew that.
Yeah, I knew that.
Yeah.
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 Didn't want to keep you, but if you want to get it out tonight, that's fine.
Do they do that during the meeting?
When we adjourn, purpose is huge.
I might change the way I say it.
Are they doing something on you?
What's the real part of this?
We still have it.
Yeah, you do have this little flatbed. And he had a third one too. He needs to get a shot. I mean, he's, you know.
Well, I always want somebody to check.
I got a solution. List his house. Oh, is it rent? Do you all want to sell it?
Camera should be balanced now. So, two balls over there.
Keith, Keith Parkes in front of him.
Really?
Well, that's my wife's.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But she knows the place and tell you that.
I hate it when it hurts.
We're getting better chairs, okay? When we do City Hall, there'll be better chairs. Mark's actually tall.
All right, everybody get their seats. Okay. Is there more? Anybody want another piece? All right. All right, we'll bring the meeting back to order. Start with a roll call.
Mayor Keim.
Here.
Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Here.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Bennett.
Here.
Alderman Eidman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Steiger.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great. First order will be election of President of the Board of Aldermen.
If it's open, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Bob Donovan for that position.
Okay. We have a motion to nominate Bob Donovan.
Second then.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Mayor.
Okay. Motion passes. Personal appearances, do we have any?
Yeah.
No personal appearances?
Mayor, if I can hear.
Yes.
Can we make an announcement about Alderman Smith's absence?
Yes. So Alderman Smith was not able to be here today. He unfortunately had a death in the family last week, so that is why he's not present. So our thoughts, of course, are with Dr. Smith at this time, and hopefully he'll be back for the next meeting, so.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. We'll move to the City Administrator Report.
So you have a revised one in front of you unless you listened before you stole it. So if I need to get you extra copies, going over what we have is Item 1. Follow-up letters will be going out soon for those who have not responded to the two rounds of letters we've been advising property owners about repair to their sidewalks. So we've kind of waited. We wanted to let you all know that these letters will be going out. These will advise folks that the city will be performing the replacement and seeking reimbursement through an invoice or a lien. Property owners have been given a couple of months to respond. We've been getting some responses, but still pretty slow, so we're going to have to move forward on it since we've already started that process. Item 3, we still have seats available for the Chamber Gala. If anybody wants to go. Any board members, city staff? We still have five seats, four or five seats available. So if anybody is interested, let me know. If you want to take your spouse, then it's just a $50 fee. Item 5, we will have the salary study review at our next work session, and that'll be with CBIZ representatives, so that'll be in a couple of weeks. That'll be a busy work session, just to let you know, because we've got a number of items that we'll be looking at at that meeting. And then we can also be putting something from the Progress Parkway part of this that we have on the agenda tonight. We want to put that on April 27th. And the city is participating in the Drug Takeback Collection again, and that'll be Saturday, April 22nd. So from 9 till noon, it'll be a drive-through area that people can drive through and drop off their medication. Instead of throwing them away or putting them in the toilet, it's best, these are done away with properly. It's a free service. Members of the community forum perform this. It's at the firehouse. We'll have a police officer there. And so we collected, I think, 58 or 60 pounds of drugs last year. It was an amazing amount, a number of bags of it. So again, that's from 9 till noon on the 22nd.
And Happy, how did that get advertised?
It's through the county extension office. They're the ones that do that, and then we'll put it on our Facebook page. Yeah, we've already, we planned that for next week. We're trying to get through the gravel race and other stuff this week, and then next week we'll push it.
Excellent.
Happy, is there any documentation required? I mean, do they have to be in the original containers or just whatever?
Most people bring them in a plastic sack from grocery stores, other stores. Any other questions?
Great. Thank you, Happy. Move on to staff reports. We'll start with Tourism Director, Taylor Lindauer.
I'd like to begin with just the highlights of my report and run through it because I am going to leave a little bit early. I was invited to meet with the Muni Board, so. First of all, we have Missouri Tourism Grant Renewals, and we're in the process of reviewing that and plugging in those numbers. I'm really excited because next week I'm going to be speaking with a gentleman about our website and the things that need to be done on that. Yeah, I'm really happy about that. Google Workspace. I am contacting key group leaders for a rollout sometime late spring, maybe early summer. And then for all who are watching, it's an open invitation. If you don't have my email address, it's tdollar@StGeneGenevieve.org, and you can always call my number if you'd like to participate. I am creating five learning modules to go along with that, so the training is going to be just hitting on five different subjects. It's going to be informal, very, you know, here's how we can collaborate and communicate together. And then in the past, I think you guys know that Plant Fest was a collaboration with the city and the master gardeners, and we planted about 800 flowers. And I also would encourage all the business owners to water them because it's been unusually hot, and so that would be appreciated. They also presented us with a $500 grant, and that would be for the summer planting. And this is something that is ongoing, so it's not just for this year. The upcoming events, as was mentioned by Happy, we have Taste of St. Gene, which kind of dovetails right into the gravel classic that starts 8 o'clock on Sunday. We have Ecol de Soldat this weekend, and then of course, jumping into May, we have Pioneer Days, and we have a lot of upcoming events, so won't go into all of those right now. As far as the grants go, I really just want to highlight that the awards will be announced on the 15th, and these are 50, you know, 50/50, up to either $10,000, or the MMG is up to $25,000. That's the maximum. The other thing that's changed on this with the state is that the funding is now open to all DMOs, which means it's going to be a lot more competitive. So we'll see how that goes. And then jumping into the marketing, at this point, I've made three key areas that I'm going to focus on for the rest of 2023, and that is the website, Google Workspace, community collaboration, and then that's going to dovetail into being able to do digital campaigns. And what that really means in a nutshell is that we're going to better understand our audience, and we're going to be able to curtail, I guess, and customize the kinds of things that they want, so it can really drive revenue. And we'll be able to know what, you know, if that's effective or not. And then that also speaks to the budgeting of 2024. And then finally, yes, working with some graphic support for all the visitor guides and the trails and the trail maps and all those things that are outdated and that need to be revamped. And we are going to lean heavily on the digital side because print, while it's still meaningful and useful, it's really going, you know, paperless. Popping down in here into the social channels, I just want to say that all of the activities that we do, my goal is to really have, is to have it streamlined and that we're working at least three months in advance. And so all of our campaigns for our events and all of activities, all the resources that the city uses towards that is all going to be tracked, and then it's also going to, we're going to know ahead of time what we're going to say, what we're going to do, and it'll be cohesive. You know, right now, we're just doing one-offs, which is okay, but it's difficult to operate that way. And I welcome anybody that wants to join, again, Workspace, or wants to send me ideas, feedback, things that they're concerned about. I'm an open book. Any questions, comments, anybody? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Steiger?
Good evening, everyone. Should have copied my report. Like to start off by welcoming the new elected members. Let your welcome stop by the firehouse anytime. Actually encourage you to stop by sometime and take a tour and see our facility, and we can talk about what we do and how we do it. So always welcome to come out. Biggest things I'd talk about tonight would be, we went to the radio meeting last night over at St. Francis County, and basically they gave us an update on the timeline. They hope to have everything done, and the radio towers installed, and all the upgrades done by May of '25, is what they're telling us out there the other night. They also informed us that we had been talking about doing a firefighter's assistance grant application for next year, and the 911 board out there has agreed to cover the cost of the grant writer for that. So sometime later this year, I'll probably be coming back asking permission to write the grant for that, but they're going to cover the cost. So the only thing we would have is if it would be funded, a 5% match on the radios at that point, but that's all down the road. The other things I'd talk about is more grant stuff. The 2021 radio grant has finally been closed out completely, thanks to Sue. She put a lot of effort into straining all the paperwork up. That was a kind of a pain. The 2022 has been approved for purchase of the radios, and that is in front of you tonight for hopefully approval, so I'll go ahead and get those radios purchased. With those, all of our mobile radios will be up to date. The grant program that that radio, or those radios were bought off of is currently open. I plan to attend, attempt another grant through that with no matching funds for some handheld radios, so I'll be writing that in the near future. And I've heard that the ARC grant will be also opening up later this year again for fire service, and I think law enforcement too, but I haven't heard any official dates. Our current ARC grant, I will be doing a two-hour webinar on the 21st. Have to sit through that to find out all the details about how to go through that program. That was a $20,000 grant, basically, for helmets and some turnout gear. I'd be open to any questions.
Any update on our tow vehicle?
I just told Happy yesterday, I got the official word, it will be totaled. I was contacted to, or attempted to contact, I was doing some other things, and the guy didn't reach me. Given it to a, I guess, the next step up about vehicles, about replacement. So the total out guy is going to be contacting me in the next couple of days to try to find out some more details.
So you have something to use in the interim, or?
We're still using the Crown Vic.
Okay.
Yeah. Hopefully, once we find out some more details, my intention would be hopefully go to State Bid and get a new one this time, and have it finished with all the license iron and stuff.
Back to that same type of vehicle?
Yeah. It works good for being able to back up tow for trailers and large groups. We'll take six guys, do a class in Winter Fire School or wherever. Works out good. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Steiger. No committee reports?
I do have a couple of things to report out. The, Steve Bacon got the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing plans today. He's going to review them today and tomorrow. We should go out for bid for City Hall in the next week or so. So we'll add the paper and then send it out to, I think the last time we sent it to maybe six or seven different contractors, so that'll be coming soon. We also talked about in the committee on furniture, telephone system, we're going to have to have temporary place to stay, we're going to find a place to do, to set up City Hall for a while. Probably going to try, you know, do our board meetings at the firehouse, but we'll have other meetings that we'll have to have at the parkhouse or other places. But we're close now at this point to getting that started. And then the healthcare committee met. You will have this coming to you at the next meeting because we have to approve it by May 1st and get it back to the insurance company. But we're looking at the three insurance plans, health insurance plans that we offer the employees. We've changed the low-end one to a full coverage, but a higher deductible, oh, no, sorry, not a higher deductible, but it cuts out BJC and St. Francis Healthcare. So that drops that price a little bit. So what we'll do is, what we don't pay for the employee, we'll add that to whoever has a dependent or family member. We've been discussing the $300 cap and keeping that. At this point, the only group that is utilizing that is those that have family coverage. And we still, we're going to be jumping to 40% in March 1st, and it still isn't going to apply except for the family at this point. But our price went up about, on average, between the plans, went up about 5.9%, when we originally thought it was going to be about 9.7%. So it's a good rate in these times with health insurance. So we'll have that, and we'll probably have a change in our dental vision. We put that out for the employees to vote on if they want to keep the two current plans that we have, or if they want to switch to Anthem. If that happens, then we'll drop our, that'll drop our health insurance premiums another 2%. So we're letting the employees decide if they've, if they've got the coverage, if they're doctors or not, or in that, in that coverage, within those plans or not. So that's all coming at the next meeting.
Can I get some clarification? You said the $300 cap doesn't apply to families?
It does. Families are the ones that are using it at this point.
Okay.
Because they're the ones with the higher amount of pay per month.
Okay. I just misunderstood that.
No, that's fine. That's the way I was explaining it, but yeah.
Okay.
Happy, this move thing, you know, you're talking about, how long did they anticipate that would have to go on?
So when we did the police department, it took us six months, but you've got like three months before you're preparing and getting moved, and then it's going to probably take us another three months to get back in. So I'm going to figure out a full year of rental somewhere.
So this is computer systems, printers, copiers, everything?
So computer system will remain what it is now, because we just bought all new. But our phone system, we have to update because it's.
Right, no, I mean, but wherever we move to, we have to move that with it.
So yeah, the intention is that we will put a new phone system in for the police department while we're moving with the old phone system wherever we go, and just run wires wherever we need to to keep it up and running.
So do we have any prospects yet as far as a location, or?
We got one at this point. I'm waiting for a phone call back on another location.
I mean, is it accessible to the public and everything?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sounds like a time-consuming deal.
Just part of it. Because we want to do both sides. We don't want to just move City Hall in here and, or just stay there and do this room and then move everybody in here, because once we do this room, we have to, we're going to be building out. There's going to be new desks, a new desk for the board members, so we won't have room to be able to function, so we've got to get out. And I think with being able to open up this whole wall and doing both sides at the same time, we'll get more done quicker. But again, I'm going to anticipate six months because we're still at a point where getting products is slow. It can, you know, one thing can slow us down.
Thank you, Happy. We'll move on to public comments.
Hi, Bob Brownie, 498 Merchant. I'd like to congratulate the new board members. Special thanks for our new mayor, and on behalf of the concerned citizens of St. Genevee, we got something for you, Mayor.
Sure appreciate it, Ronny.
Thank you, Bob. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Barbara Carine, and I live at 450 Walnut Street, St. Genevee. First of all, I'm not a public speaker, so I apologize, and congratulations to everybody new. First of all, none of you would want your neighbors that are catacarners across the street from you to park in front of your house if they didn't park in front of their own house. It is usually completely empty all the time. The wife will park in the driveway if it is empty, but most of the time, he moves a trailer in the driveway so she can't park there. He also will move the car over to our side after she gets home. Every day, if they are home, and always at night, I am, and always at night, I am sharp, and I do 99% of the driving. I can't see to back out with the SUV, the Avalanche, and the black car blocking my view. It is dangerous, and kids ride up and down after school, and you can't see them. Neighbors fly up and down our street. Our street is very narrow to begin with. They park all the way up to my driveway. You couldn't put a bicycle between the front of their car, in front of their car and the driveway. He is harassing us. He started smirking and waving when we are in the living room, which he can see right from his front yard, so I waved back. It is causing us stress, and my blood pressure has been going up. Jim has severe health issues. He has congestive heart failure. Previous massive heart attack and AFib. He also had a previous stroke, which can show up as a new one, which we just found that out. He's been in the ER two times, Friday night and in March, and then he got admitted from Sunday to Wednesday. The neighbor put a trailer, which he could move it over a side or by the other trailer in the driveway, and empties trash in it, and emptied his trash can also in the trailer. The other trailer is on the front of some gravel. They should be with his other trailers where he parks his business trailers, finally. He has junk from side yard of driveway to the fence. It is a junkyard. This is hurting our property value. He is a renter. He doesn't pay taxes. He doesn't take care of the yard. He had a trailer full of brush on the street for four weeks. They cut the tree halfway down and all the branches seven weeks ago, and he had the sidewalk blocked with wood on Monday. The tree looks like a totem pole. No kidding. Neighbor and his brother cleaned a lot of the wood up. He finally had his wife cleaning up the brush on Palm Sunday. He put the trailers in the yard until this week. Last year, I asked him, please not to park behind my driveway, and his comment is, do you own the street? I was caught off guard and didn't think to say, my taxes paid for this, and you just rent. A few weeks ago, he had three trailers on the street. I called the police and told them that there were three trailers on the street on both sides. Fire trucks or ambulance would not be able to get through. I called the police because one of his visitors stepped right out from behind his car in front of me, and since I was in the middle of the street, I came close to hitting him. The three trailers hagged in and hooked. He backs up to them so they look like they're hitched to the car or truck. They are in front of my house. I ended up calling police five times because first he didn't move them, then he brought the one back. He lies to the police about what he's doing, to the neighbors, and I also called the chief and spoke to him about it. He said to police, call my alderman about what we could do about the parking. I walked the neighborhood, and no one in that whole neighborhood parks in front of their neighbors unless it's a holiday party, and that doesn't make any issues. The only reason the truck isn't in front of the house at this time is a quality muffler. He left it sit at my house from Sunday to Thursday last week, and he never moved it. He has company to park in front of my yard now. This week, he parked the trailer in front of my house with brush, and it sat there for hours. I was given it until 6:00 PM before I called the police. He is putting trash on the trailer and leaving junk sit on it and isn't emptying it. He takes stuff out of the garage and puts it in the yard. He don't clean up after the dogs so the neighbor can smell it. Dogs bark when you walk outside into your own yard. Gutters are pulling away from the house. His dad parks in front of our house, too. Dad emptied his trash can today from the house on the trailer. Jim was sweeping our sidewalk yesterday, and he gave him harassing stares in our own yard and driveway. He is hurting our property value. I am asking for a no parking for two spots because my truck got broken into in Memphis and broke the ignition, and it has to be towed back until I can get it to be fixed. I need a place to put my own truck. I guarantee you, no one will want to sign in front of their house in the brochure edition because I don't see anyone having a jerk for a neighbor. I would be happy to go from house to house and show them pics of him, which I got pictures, or two handicap places, one for my truck and one for his dad because he damn sure will park there. But if he drives his dad's truck, I will call the police. We think his dad is handicapped, but I'm not positive of that. Someone told me they thought so, but I don't know that positively. What would you do if this was yours, what would you do if you were in this situation? And I have pictures. But it has been stressing me out, and for the last eight months, he has parked directly in front of our house with the truck, the trailer, the car, and SUV, and usually never in front of his house. Now, if his wife comes home, she will park in front of the house, but he will usually move the car. Last night, she parked in front of her house. When I came back last night, he had moved it back in front of our house. And you can't see the back out, and that's my worst thought, because I do not want to hit anybody, and I sure don't want to hit a kid, because by the time I'm leaving my garage, I can see, but by the time I get to where they're blocking my view, I can't see, so. And like I said, he, it's a public street, I understand, but an ambulance could not get there without parking in the middle of the street, or if paramedics came with them, there'd be no place for the fire paramedics to go. And I mean, he rents, we own, we have been there since 15, and we lived in St. Genevee County most of our lives, so I need help because you ask nicely, and it tells you it's a public street and just storms off, and now he's smirking from his yard. So when he waved, I waved back with a smirk too, because I wasn't going to say I wasn't unfriendly. So please help me do something.
Your address again, ma'am?
450 Walnut Drive.
Mr. Jeff is kind of maybe aware of this last week and this week, and with the new board switching over, we'll come see you tomorrow and get a little bit more information and see what we can do to address this.
Well, we have a doctor's appointment in the morning, but we'll be home in the afternoon.
Absolutely.
Please, I just, I need help because he is deliberately aggravating us, and with Jim's health conditions.
Understood.
He is stressed out, and that's why I think he's been in the hospital, because his old stroke is presenting as a new stroke, and I never knew that.
Understood.
But they said that can happen from stress, and we're stressed.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. We'll move on to.
Consent.
Okay, so we'll move to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to old business.
Nothing to present.
Nothing to present now?
Okay.
Then we'll move on to new business. First thing on the agenda is the Progress Parkway Property Bid Review.
So we had the bids, bid opening on the 5th for Progress Parkway. This is what we talked about, bid opening. We had no bidders. We had nothing submitted, and we had nobody show up that day with any bids. My recommendation is that at the next work session, that we have a closed meeting and discuss the next steps.
Sounds good. Okay, we're going to move on to next item, which is the approval of the bid for, that's from Vern Bowman Contracting for the removal of the water tower, or excuse me, water, toss that, water tank on Blaine Street.
We had one bid for that, $35,240. We would go for them removing and scrapping it.
We would go for them removing and scrapping it. I think that's the best way to go. We had sent it out to a couple of people that had talked to us about the water tank, but we only got the one bid in, so.
So Happy, since this is not a budgeted amount, I mean, it still can be approved just through?
You will, yeah, what you'll do is approve it now, and then when we bring a budget amendment, so we just do that now twice a year, at that time, you'll approve that, the change in finances to that line item.
So our intent is to get it done this year?
Yeah. It seems to be the board's intention, so that's what we're moving forward with.
Does that come out of general budget, or is that?
It'll come out of the water system, water improvement.
I'll make a motion.
Well, I just want to bring some clarity to one point. So is it safe to assume that city labor and resource to deal with the scrap would outweigh that benefit, right? Yeah. Okay. I just want to make that point. I'm sorry, Eric, I'll yield back to you.
Well, it's cheaper for them to take it and get rid of everything.
Yeah.
Just one other, I mean, what about as far as access with equipment? Have we secured all of that?
Yeah, we'll discuss with the neighbors. And I think they've already, Steve's already talked to Mississippi Live about accessing from their side. If not, we'll get in touch with them. I don't see an issue with that. Motion?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, approval of the purchase of parts for the wastewater UV system from Denor Water Technologies LLC.
So this is a equipment-specific piece of, or equipment that we need to use for the UV system, it's out of the wastewater plant. So it's over $5,000. We're bringing it to the board for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we're going to move on to bill number 4551, which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a proposal for professional services with Cochrane Engineering for Pierre Marquette Park Trail Rehabilitation Project.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion. And a second.
All in favor? Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay. We'll move on to first and second reading for bill number 4552, which is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, accepting a proposal from Metro Ag, Inc., and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the removal and land utilization of lime residuals from the water treatment plant.
Happy, I've got a question on that. This seems different than what we've done in the past. Is it the same?
It's the same.
Same?
Yeah, we're doing the same processes that we've done before. It's the same group, they're the same, you know, same applications. So I'm not sure why it would, it would seem different. Maybe we didn't split it up between the two contracts.
That might be it. Yeah. Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Okay, motion for a second reading?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Second reading of bill number 4552, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, accepting a proposal from Metro Ag, Inc., and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the removal and land utilization of lime residuals from the water treatment plant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Alderman Clapham?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Einman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4552 now becomes ordinance 4473.
Move along to a first and second reading, bill number 4553, which is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, accepting a proposal from Metro Ag, Inc., and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the removal and land utilization of residuals from the wastewater treatment plant. Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion for a second reading?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, bill number 4553, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, accepting a proposal from Metro Ag, Inc., and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the removal and land utilization of residuals from the wastewater treatment plant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Einman?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Clapham?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4553 now becomes ordinance 4474.
Then we'll move on to a first and second reading of bill number 4554, which is an ordinance approving the purchase of new state-approved mobile radios for the fire department from Wireless USA.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Roll call, please.
Please for a second reading.
Oh, second reading. My apologies, sir. I'll get better at this. Jump the gun. Bill number 4554, an ordinance approving the purchase of a new state-approved mobile radios for the fire department from Wireless USA.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Now we'll do the roll call.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.